To the board meeting, but would everybody stand for the pledge?
You're the closest to the pledge. To the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the routine and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. It's nice to see you. Nice turnout. Welcome indeed. We will get right to our agenda with the approval of the agenda for today's meeting.
I'd like to entertain a motion for item one point zero three, approval of the official pen twenty twenty-three regular board meeting agenda.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. In the minutes from last meeting.
Entertain a motion for item one point zero four, the approval of the March twenty-seven twenty twenty-three regular board meeting.
Any questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? You're the animals, thank you. We will go student body report.
Hello, I'm Cooper.
And I'm family.
From the fifth grade.
We wanted to share a few fun things that have been happening at Geneseo Elementary these past few weeks.
March was an extremely busy month for students in the elementary building. A group of trades we highlighted last month were bravery and optimism, and students sprang in over a hundred and ten Go Blue cards and got to sign the law of fame. We learned a lot about how it may be hard to be brave, but when we remain optimistic, we can accomplish anything we set our mind to. We had a Go Blue assembly in the hallways. It was hilarious. The kids chewed on the teachers with great optimism as the teachers showcased bravery while performing silly obstacles in the halls. It was a lot of fun.
March was a busy month as we hosted the book fair, celebrating Patrick's Day. The library was turned into a circus as we celebrated the end of the Across America Week. And hosted the SUNY Geneseo Department of Neuroscience for the Brain Fair. We also hosted our Steve Fair and and Star Labs. Special thanks to Ms. Burks and Ms. Wilcox for organizing these events.
A group of fifth graders represented Geneseo Elementary at Steam Jam, an experience held at Genesee Community College. While we were there, we saw robots, Simo, we saw toothpick bridges, and they tested their strength. There was a paper tower building challenge, and we got to build cardboard animals with moving appendages.
Our second graders participate in a job fair last month with local families presenting to students. Students heard from farmers, park rangers, restaurant owners, and business owners. There were even some teacher presentation, present
Presenters.
Presenters on local hobbies they present, participating in.
The Whale of An auction took place last month, and we had a pretty good turnout. We are so grateful for all of the donations that were made on behalf of this trip. We are two months away from the whale watch trip, and we are getting excited.
Some exciting events upcoming include the fourth slash fifth graders going to Aladdin on Saturday with Miss Townsend. And the three, four, five, and fifth graders will be taking the New York State ELA test at the end of the month. We also have several field trips planned. There will, and we are so happy for the nicer weather so we can get outside for PE. There is so much going on at elementary, and we are so grateful for all of these experiences and the staff that give up their time to support our students.
Thank you for listening, and have a great day to go blue way.
Outstanding. Mr. Manaps, would you thank those two students for another great trip?
They had some break and they were just ready to perform, so.
Outstanding. Great. So, Tiana, you're a
So, back to follow.
Yeah, very.
Seems like a lot's been happening, not from break, but going, coming from break. The Do Gooders Club is sponsoring the play Survivors to present to our eighth through twelfth grade student body next Tuesday, April eighteenth. This will be the second time that the club has brought this play to our school. The play is inspired by the lives and testimonies of ten Rochester-based Holocaust survivors. And is crafted to put a human face on this important time in history. It is a cautionary tale on the risks of normalized hate. This inspirational and uplifting play ensures that the voices of our survivors will never be silenced. Tuesday is the Holocaust Remembrance Day. The Do Gooders Club would like to invite you to come to this, to come join the student body for this enriching event. The play will be presented at nine AM and should last about an hour. Members of Do Gooders Clubs will be presenting their information to their peers in the Holocaust in social studies classes this Friday in preparation for the play on Tuesday. Senior class officers are busy planning the final arrangements for the throng, which will be next Saturday night. They're in the final stretch of selling tickets and looking forward to a night of dinner and dancing. The high school patroness competed at their sectional final competition on March twenty-eighth, the Tuesday before spring break, where they bested every school in our area, winning the competition with a very dramatic ending. The high school patroness team should be commended on their stellar season. Many of our members are graduating seniors who have been patroness since sixth grade. This is a phenomenal way to end their high school patronage careers. Mrs. Harvey will be hosting another Lunch and Learn tomorrow, April eleventh, with Cassandra Splotch, a physician's assistant with the U R Medicine. Students will have the opportunity to learn about what a physician assistant does and how to become one. Any questions?
Another great one. Thank you, thank you very much.
You too.
Terrific. Folks, we'd like to go a little bit out of order. The board meets with the administrators every year to review the progress of our non-tenured faculty, of which there's over thirty. And they're all terrific. And of that number, we have five here tonight that are candidates for tenure, having been recommended by Mrs. Flowers. And we'd like to take action on your tenure tonight so that you can go home and work on your classroom papers and so forth for tomorrow. So, well, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tenali.
Um, we could do one at a time. I just have, before we start, I just have to do a couple of words I want to say, but I do want to say that you can all thank Savannah, because, you know, being a new mom with a newborn, we really want to be kind, she had just some her time and then let her go home for that note. I mean, baby. As educators, we all understand the importance of job security and the benefits of tenure. It allows educators to focus on their passion for teaching and learning, knowing that they have the support and protection necessary to carry out their duties to the best of their abilities. As we all know, being a K twelve teacher is a challenging and rewarding profession. With the support of tenure, you can continue to grow and excel in your careers, providing your students with the best possible education and setting them up for success in the future. In my opinion, there is not a more noble profession. Tenure recognition is an important milestone in the career of educators who have demonstrated exceptional leadership and expertise in their respective fields. In this case tonight, not only are we recognizing teachers, teaching assistants, but we are recognizing the tenure of Mrs. Miller, Director of Pupil Personnel, who has been an invaluable asset to our school district. Mrs. Miller's role is critical as she oversees teaching and learning as well as special education, ensuring that all students receive the support they need to succeed academically and socially. Her contributions have been particularly noteworthy as she has played a pivotal role in supporting many of the initiatives identified in our strategic plan. Through her leadership and dedication, Mrs. Miller has helped to create a positive and inclusive learning environment for our students. And we are proud to recognize her as well as all of our other educators tonight for tenure. Congratulations all.
And then we call the Alright, I would like to entertain a more Excellent, verified for the appointment of Savannah.
Sir, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for eight point oh six for the appointment of tenure of Melissa Visale.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Under eight point zero seven, I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of tenure for Betsy Needabaugh.
Second.
Eight point zero eight, I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of tenure of Gretchen Rock.
Sir.
And under eight point oh nine, I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of tenure of Stephanie Miller.
Congratulations to you all. We were very fortunate to have you, and we hope you're with us for a long time. Thank you for all you do for our kids. Thanks for coming. And as we always say, you can stay if you want, but you don't have to. So, it's up to you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Congratulations all.
Thanks very much. Presentations. Our newly tenured Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Mrs. Miller.
Alright, I also will have Mr. Van Ups and Mrs. Hathaway join me. They're gonna speak about some things that I'm also sharing. So, I'm gonna start with, oh, I'm sorry. Just wanted to start with the framework. We're focusing on social emotional learning and just wanted to go back to the competencies related to that under Castle. So, a common framework when we talk about social emotional learning is the Castle Wheel. They continue to add to that wheel and add different components. I think when I did a presentation not too long ago, I showed the wheel, demonstrated some of the things that we are focusing on. So, when we talk about social emotional learning, we're talking about those components that are in orange, green, and yellow. And so, this is the framework in which we have been focusing. We talk about supporting students academically and social motionally. The, when I refer to Castle, that's a collaborative for academic and social emotional learning. They've been at the forefront of research and sharing models and frameworks and toolkits for school districts to help support in this area. And New York State also has put out some SEL benchmarks to serve as guidance for districts to support in this area as well. So, just wanted to give some background about those skills and competencies that we're trying to help foster in students at Geneseo, UPK through twelve. Social emotional learning also connects to our climate, our school climate, or our district climate and culture. And just wanted to also illustrate and underscore the connection between those two as it's also a goal of ours and the strategic plan to focus on our social emotional learning of our students, staff, and community, but also build a strong climate and culture within the district. So, how those connect are important. They, they support one another. So, just wanted to kind of talk about the benefits of social emotional learning, not just for our students, but for our larger community. So, one of the ways oftentimes in education, we talk a lot about our academics or look at our academic scores, AP scores, region scores. You just heard about our three through eight assessments. But we don't have as much data from students. So, for the last two years, we've administered a survey tool through third grade through twelfth grade through a company that's created at Panorama, and it is perceptual data from our student population. So, students answer questions. We've done, we did a pilot in two thousand and twenty-one, just three grade levels at the elementary building. Or three classrooms, I should say, three, four, and five. And then last year was the first year that we implemented it or gathered data from students third through twelfth grade. And again, did it this winter. So, we've had two opportunities to administer to students. So, I'm gonna reference our current data and also our data from a previous administration. So, there's two different surveys. They look at student competencies. So, again, going back to that wheel, their ability, their self-management and self-awareness, and also relationships with others. So, students are reflecting on their own skills and competencies. And then the second part is their environment and their supports within the school building. So, there's another piece of that survey. And I just wanted to share our participation rate of the students that took that survey this year. I'm gonna move forward through some data, but I wanted to touch on two points first. When comparing, this is a company that has given, administered the survey nationally. So, a number of different size school districts have completed the survey. So, one of the pieces, when I share the data, it's compared nationally. And so, I'm gonna give a percentile. So, what our scores look like compared to those that have taken the survey in different districts. You also are able to pinpoint a little further, not just all, all students in all different types of districts, but you can pinpoint whether it's an elementary building, whether their free and reduced lunch is similar to ours, and whether it's an urban or non-urban school. So, you can even get it down a little closer to how does our district compare with other schools that are similar to us. The other thing that I will share in the data today is it talks about percent favorable. So, when I say, when we look at some things, it's gonna ask, it's gonna give data about the percent favorable related to that question. So, oftentimes, there will be five answers that students can select. So, an example up here is how excited are you about going to class, this class, the class that you are taking? And there are five options for students to answer. If a student answers the quite excited or very excited, those last two, that is the, and the percentage of students that answer that, that's percent favorable. So, it's just those top two. On other questions, there are seven options. It would be the top three. So, that's how we get to that percent favorable. So, I just wanted to review those two because it will be in the chart. So, I wanted people to understand where those pieces come from. So, the survey looks at a variety of different things. The three that we're going to review today as they connect to our strategic plan and some of the work that we're focusing on supportive relationships, sense of belonging, and school climate. So, you can see those survey topics. You can see the first column is our third through fifth graders from last winter compared to this winter. And then it has the national percentage. And then same with our sixth through twelve, winter of twenty twenty-two, and then this past winter. And then how that compares nationally. So, these are the three areas that we've dug into a little bit deeper. And so, I wanted to share because what does that mean, supportive relationships? What does that mean, sense of belonging? So, the next couple of slides, I'm gonna show the types of questions that students were asked and where we fell within all of those. So, in each category, supportive relationships, there was a number of questions students had to answer to get to that percent favorable. So, I just wanted to go through some of those questions, starting with supportive relationships. So, here are the four different questions that students were asked to answer. Again, on a scale maybe five to six, and what the responses were in terms of their percent favorable. First two columns being the elementary building through five, and the second column, six through twelve. Again, this is a dipstick into students' perception, how they're feeling on that particular day, and in response to that.
Okay, so that is the first.
Supportive relationships. I'm digging into that a little deeper. Then I'll dig into sense of belonging and then school culture. Does that make sense? Okay, so this is kind of overall, big picture, those three areas, and then we'll kind of dig in deeper into each of those areas. So, the NA just means that those question, that specific question wasn't a question on the elementary survey. So, we move to sense of belongings. This is the second area. So, you could see we had some strong, students felt like they had a teacher that they could go to. Some people might look at this and say, wow, there are some areas that might be concerning. That's helpful to us as we're trying to talk about what are our next steps to support students? How can we dig into, okay, what did, what do students feel like the word connected me? What are they looking for in terms of connected to adults at school? I think what's important, we discussed today as an admin team, I've been looking more and more at this data, is that, you know, sometimes people can look at data and say that it's, you know, good or bad data. And really, with an open mindset, what we're saying is this is reflective of how our students are feeling. And so, we need to do a couple of different things. We need to gather more information from students to find out what does that mean to them? How did they answer those questions and gather more information? But then, we know that the last three years, society has significantly changed. And lots of different factors have impacted our students in different ways. Social media impacts our students. So, instead of thinking about this in a good or bad way, it's like, how do we change what we're currently doing to help our students be more successful is how we're really looking at, at this data and our next steps.
Can we define the gap between this data and the national data? Two slides prior to this.
Still looking at what, yes, I'm gonna show one kind of what, an elementary example and a middle school, high school example of kind of where that falls on the bell shape. So, that actually, that's my next slide to kind of see, what does that mean? So, student sense of belonging, if we're looking at that compared nationally, so we had a thirty-seven percent favorable, meaning that kids responded positively to those questions about sense of belonging. But when we compare it to other high schools, so again, the options, there was only three, elementary, middle, or high schools, so I'm comparing it to other high schools because I couldn't pick both middle and high. We fall in the thirty percentile on that curve. So, those are some, those are some further questions, right? With any data, there's a lot of things like, we never took this survey prior to COVID. How, how did students feel prior to COVID? This is our only two administrations. So, again, I say it's one piece of information. We're going to need to speak with students in small groups to better understand, you know, did we, did everyone take this survey seriously? The anecdotal pieces, we just, this is just one piece to start helping our planning in this area. So, school climate was the third. So, we had supportive relationships, sense of belonging, and school climate. Going back to that slide, student social emotional, their skill set, their competencies often correlate with our school climate. So, wanted to dig into those questions as well at both the elementary and middle high level. Again, talking about that physical space, those were not questions for elementary students to answer. And then, this is the three through five example of how that compares nationally.
So, yeah, same question.
Yep, how?
Nationally, what defines the gap between?
Where other schools are.
And I know it's too early to draw a needle, but we're getting to the data.
Yeah.
Understanding.
And I think we needed some level of baseline information, right, for us to move forward because we didn't have any information from students. We weren't asking formally or anything that was normed. Students, so we needed a starting point. So, I think this is our starting point, and then, yeah, what, what is, because the next is like, so what? Now what, right? So, just kind of summarizing some areas, something that I, there were other components of that survey. There are some questions about safety that was a high area in our middle school, high school. Again, I think if we look at everything and dig into everything, we're going to miss focusing on a couple of things and doing those things well. There's students' perception, questions about their grit, their self-awareness, their relationships with other students. That, those are also components of that, but not what we're digging into at this moment. But just wanted to highlight some of those next steps and some things that we, we took away from, from that survey. So, we'll bring it back to another thing that I always talk a lot about, besides the circle, is multi-tiered systems of support. So, again, we talk, we often talk about our academic piece, but we're talking about the whole child. We have to pay attention to not only those behavior academic pieces, but those social emotional pieces. So, this is a starting point for us to look at how are we systematically supporting students in these areas? So, I think our, our staff does a number of different things and have participated in professional learning around a lot of different items. You've heard and some of you saw one of our teachers that was here previously, Paul Hazard, had a group of students come in and demonstrate a restorative circle. We had a number of staff members that participated in that. We utilize those for our conference days. That is a way to help build community, but it's not systematic. Every student isn't exposed to that. We're not all, we're not doing that in every classroom every day. You might have heard about Second Step. That is also a program. Some scripted lessons that were happening elementary through eighth grade. Again, those are a component, but it doesn't help us UPK through twelve. So, we have some of those pieces. Again, I think we can continue to enhance. This year, we've had some people share a little bit about the first five. Those are other ways, quick ways for teachers and, and staff members and students to connect. There's sometimes a goofy question or a check-in. Teachers utilize that as a way to connect. So, we have components of things that we're doing, but our administrative team has identified we need something that's more systematic that we're doing all the way through, not just little pockets of things. I think we do a nice jobs of making connections. But how can we continue to build students' skill sets and those competencies that we've identified, that the state has identified are important, important not only for school, but beyond school? So, we started to dig into now what, and this is a little bit where Mrs. Hathaway and Mr. Van Ups will share some of the work that we've started in this area.
Perfect, thank you. So, the data is a snapshot into one perspective of our students' day. And a piece that was, we thought was extremely important was to look at our counseling team and our administrative team in the process of developing our strategic plan and say, well, where are the foundational pieces and the the comprehensive measures that we're able to employ and practice each day that will meet some of the needs that the students are saying that they have? They may not be saying that they have the need, but the data is showing that there is a need there. So, in that, unpacking of that data and saying, okay, these are the needs that we're seeing. This is what kids are saying. We're able to identify that we need something that is comprehensive. It needs to be something that all students are getting from UPK to twelve, so that language is consistent so that we're addressing some of the social emotional learning benchmarks that your state is slowly pushing out to all of our staff to employ each day. We need something that was research-based and provided a sense of belonging for our students and our staff. It's not just about our students. It's making sure that our staff have the foundation and the capacity to foster connections and climate within their teams and amongst their departments and across the building. And that there's some high-impact materials and strategies that can be employed no matter what the setting is. This is not just for teachers. This is not just for administrators. It's for coaches. It's for families. It's for the entire community. So, there's a comprehensive piece that we said we have to begin to explore. So, in that work, in looking at how we begin to, to research and determine what is the best next step for us to, to begin to look at, we, we came across a resource called Character Strong. And a couple of months ago, Courtney and I were able to, Hathaway and I were able to attend a national conference from the creators of this program. And this program here, very simple quote from the program, it, it does all of these things. We went there and over our Uh, we went there and over a couple of days, we were able to not just walk away with, here's a resource that can be a powerful tool to support these bullets. Uh, most of that conference was not even about that. The conference was about the, uh, philosophy behind why you need these things in a school system. It focused on the adults, not the kids. Because when the adults are there and invested and are able to understand the power behind all of this, then our kids will buy into it. It was a collective community focus and not just bring it back and try it. So over the, uh, over the last several months, we've been working on multiple types of pilots that we'll talk about in just a second, but, uh, turn it over.
So with that, um, one of them that we looked at was like he mentioned, uh, Character Strong. Um, and I'm going to just put in this other piece, because we say data, data, data. I get excited when I see that data because that's information to help us guide and provide even more information and support and opportunities for our students that are staff. So it's exciting and I'm not a numbers person. I'm more the warm and fuzzy kind of person as a social worker. Um, but with Character Strong and after looking at multiple different, um, social emotional programs, this that we're going to talk about, there's a short video clip, it's grounded in research. It's really focuses on that vertical alignment for the whole child, that whole person. Um, and it teaches the social emotional piece and character, character development. So both of those, um, are intertwined with one another. It's in all fifty, um, fifty states. There's twenty-one countries. Three point two million students are served by this program. So it's vetted and it's built by students and teachers. So with that, let's play the short video clip about Character Strong, get a better idea about it.
There's nothing like the sound of engagement. There's nothing better than the feeling of belonging. There's nothing more important right now than our mental health and wellbeing. Families, educators and students have been through so much. Let's create a more loving world together through education. What does engagement look like? Studies have shown over half of students in middle school and high school are disengaged. Student engagement drives learning. Engagement is about more than just academics. It's high attendance, active involvement in academics and school activities. A sense of school connectedness, a strong purpose for learning. We are social beings, never more so than in adolescence. Students have a powerful need for social connection with peers. Character Strong's lessons help students build skills for connection while directly engaging them in getting to know each other, creating relationships and building community right in the classroom. What does it mean to belong, to feel accepted, valued, respected and supported? Seventy-three percent of Generation Z sometimes or always feel alone. A sense of belonging increases students' happiness, self-esteem and persistence. Character Strong's lessons are designed to improve both classroom and school climate by providing a more positive, inclusive environment that helps students feel safe and connected. Seven out of ten teens in the US have named anxiety or depression as a major problem among their peers in the community. Seventy-five percent of US high school students expressed boredom, anger, sadness, fear or stress while in school. Support for mental health is not just for those dealing with anxiety or depression. Every one of us can do things to support our mental, social, emotional wellbeing. Young people have said loud and clear that addressing mental health should be a priority. Character Strong's lessons support all students by focusing on the development of emotional, mental and social wellbeing to help them build their mental health. Engagement, belonging, wellbeing. These things aren't another thing on the plate. They are the plate. Let's work together to create a more loving world through education.
So that's just, and, and I also want to reiterate, they say mental health, not mental wellness, the whole person. So it's just not, um, looking at this, Character Strong directly is in line with SEL and the Castle Competencies. So they are, um, one of the, um, co-founders and director of this, she was, uh, one of the national recognized school counselors. So she is in alignment with the School Counselor Association, um, and they're the standards. Um, because we did a lot of research and vetting, making sure that it was really going to be kind of the, the whole package that Casey talked about wanting different pieces of it. We've been really fortunate, real, it's been very exciting that we've been able to do, um, a pilot in the elementary school and in our middle school with Character Strong. Um, Case is going to talk about the elementary in a minute. I'm going to talk more about the middle, middle school. But what's been really awesome about this is the pilot is focusing, we're utilizing Character Strong, the program, the curriculum in our classes. Um, it's a pilot, so it's small, um, but it focuses on these areas. These very areas of that belonging, of the wellbeing, of the relationship, of the community that are the pieces that we have opportunities to continue to grow. Our students are saying, I'm looking for those opportunities. I need that. Um, so I'm going to have you think, talk a little about it at the elementary level.
Yeah, I think it's important to make that connection that, um, the engagement belonging and wellbeing is exactly what the, um, data from Panorama survey was telling us that our kids were saying they were, we were lacking, that we can improve on. Not that it's not there, but based on that, that day in that class period, that student needed something more, some of those students needed more. And that's what this, uh, resource is providing, that consistency across each grade level. At the elementary level, uh, we, we took a very localized approach. Um, I picked two kindergarten classrooms to start it back in October and they've done it every single day. It's a fifteen to twenty-minute, uh, program, um, where they've taken their own liberties and made personal connections for them. We, we look at it as a resource and teachers are looking at that resource and saying, how can I make this personal for the students in this classroom? You can switch to the next slide. Wait, what you will see is that these three pillars of be kind, be strong, be well are the foundational pillars that are the comprehensive connection up through twelfth grade. So those nine character traits on the bottom, uh, are expanded on each and every year. And they're referred back to in different lessons as character, characters. Kids go from, uh, each of the different pillars of character. Um, so when they're talking about being kind, they connect to what it looks like to be strong and how you need to be strong to be kind. And that consistent language is the most powerful piece that I've taken from this. Because a kiddo in sixth grade is going to be hearing the same language that they had back in second grade. The experiences that they're going to participate in, the protocols and activities are the same activities. So there's no, uh, fear of what they're supposed to be doing. But the level of information and the, uh, target audience is a little bit elevated because it's a different grade level. So that comprehensive and very vertically aligned curriculum is a powerful piece of this. We have two kindergarten classrooms that are currently doing this and have been doing it since October. This was a, a powerful day for me. They invited me in, um, and they wanted to show me the gratitude ball that they made. Uh, the month of November for them was gratitude and the kiddos were able to explain to me what gratitude meant. They were able to talk about why they're grateful for individual people in the school. The next week, they then did it with, uh, family members. They had pictures around the room. And when they were feeling sad, because it's only November, they were able to go to those pictures and talk to that picture about what they feel grateful for them for. Powerful experience that every kid in the classroom can connect with. And then they, that, uh, turned to other kindergarten classmates, uh, classrooms and did the same thing with those, with those students who didn't even participate in this program. So they were then turning that information and sharing it with others around them. Uh, super powerful, powerful experience. Since then, we've had, uh, first, second, third and fourth grade classroom participate. We have two of those that are doing just one day a week. They're squeezing all five lessons into one experience. Uh, and then in the other two grades, they're doing the daily practice. Uh, each week they would start intentionally where they introduce the, the skill that is being worked on that week. Uh, the next day they expand on what that skill is and do that explicit instruction. The third day is where they actually participate in an activity where they're building something together. They then reflect on that experience and on the last day they exit from that, that SERF model, they call it. Uh, where you start intentionally and exit intentionally, uh, is an experience that goes from K to twelve. So again, these kids are walking into an experience that they're comfortable with. And it really is the, uh, actual activities and tasks and the information that is shared that is elevated each end of the year. And I, I've seen that as one of the most powerful pieces of this program. Feedback from students, they know what's happening. They love the activities and they're super engaged with what's happening in the classroom. Feedback from teachers, kids are running these lessons because they know what to expect, but they want more. So teachers are starting each week by saying, what are we going to do today? And they are unveiling little pictures as to what the new trait is or what the new activity is going to be. The activities and protocols that they participate in, a lot of them are games, getting to know you activities. Uh, they, they share them with us as staff members. They have staff dares, character dares for students. Uh, connections home with family members. So there's a newsletter that goes home each week to keep families engaged, questions to talk about at the dinner table, not just an elementary thing. Those questions would continue through the secondary level as well. So nothing but, uh, positive comments so far. We're excited to see how those upper intermediate grades uh, transition into something more of a five-day-a-week practice. They were just kind of getting a feel for what the one day a week feels like. And over the next ten weeks, they're going to shift to a daily practice.
So to piggyback off of question. To, to piggyback off of that, so from sixth, seventh and eighth grade, um, we had been in a pilot directly with Character Strong, so it definitely has been more directed. And what that means, um, is we're, we're like, they, we're gathering, we're utilizing the curriculum. Um, and then we're giving feedback and they're also giving class feedback. So it's this really intense, um, approach. And it's really been so eye-opening to our staff and our students. So with it, we had six teachers that volunteered to say, yeah, I want to do the Character Strong lessons in my class. Um, Character Strong, their team picked three random samples and, and chose those three classes. So there's one in each of the grades that are doing it. It started off, it's the lessons are typically twenty to twenty-five minutes. Although in the beginning, it took longer because students wanted to participate. I was in the class today and the teacher now has to limit like, I'm only collecting, only going to have two volunteers because everybody wants to participate, um, in the activities that have the conversation. So, um, that is really neat to see when you have more hands up because that doesn't always happen. Um, so with that and, and kind of the work that goes into it, the three teachers have really been champions for this. Um, they engaged in a three-hour training about Character Strong. They engage every other week, um, meeting with myself and Stephanie Miller to really talk about what's going well in your classroom. What are your needs specifically to Character Strong? And then, um, two times a month, Craig, Stephanie and I meet with, um, the implementation director through Character Strong. We have that direct pipeline to say, what's working? What do we need? And they are, they are providing information to us. So it really has been, when we talk about doing this and implementing it with fidelity, um, we're getting that information. What does it look like? Basically kind of mentioned that piece of starting the lesson with a connector. So the students today did this or that. Would you rather have a dog or a cat? And they had to get up and move, this is eighth graders, move to the side of the room, right? It's interactive. Um, then there's a lesson component of it and there's a reflection piece. Um, so that is what the typical day looks like. It's predictable. They know what days they're doing it. Um, and they're building that skill and practicing it. The other compartment is starting intentionally. So on the days that the teachers are doing Character Strong, they are doing these four plus one more. They are standing out there, making eye contact with every single one of the students that are walking into that room. They're saying that student's name. They're giving, um, hand-to-hands, let's be a high five, an elbow, a fist bump, is making that connection. And then the heart-to-heart is seeing them and making that connection, not just like, hey, how are you and passing by? But if they're not, um, it's how was, how was that game over the weekend? Tell me about this. You're, you're digging a little deeper, not just, um, how are you? See you later. Good to see you. It's not that quick piece. It's quick, but it's deep, deeper. And then the entry task is every student, when they walk in, there is something on the board they know to get started. They're going to work on that task. Um, so that is one of the big things for Character Strong that, um, are hoping that all staff would do that. Um, it would be, it's very quick and it's a great way to increase connection, belonging, and also to, um, increase the academic engagement time because you have hooked the students, you've connected with them, you see them as people. The other component that our teachers are utilizing, um, for this pilot, the three teachers are also sending positive notes home. So we have postcards and it's a simple, hey, great job interacting, um, in the group today. Or thank you for sharing. Thank you for being vulnerable. And those are going home. So that's kind of the wraparound, um, from a sixth, seventh and eighth grade. More in the pilot, it's more structured, um, but we're really getting an opportunity to try it out. Um, the next slide you will see, um, sixth, seventh and eighth graders really during their day engaging, um, up in motion. Like I said, it's interactive, it's reflective, it's teaching those skills. Something that our teachers have said is like, in the beginning, our students were kind of uncomfortable to do this, to have these face-to-face conversations with one another. Um, because that's a skill that some of them, um, maybe for some time haven't had the opportunity to practice. Uh, when we talk about that vertical alignment, we talk about, man, if our students in the elementary school and as they continue to progress, know what the lesson, know the, the character, the trait that they're working on. Think about the deeper conversations that will happen naturally and organically as they progress, laying that framework. So, um, I think that there's, there's a lot of opportunities, not only with our staff utilizing this, but also, um, students are, are engaging it in a positive way.
Courtney, one question. Uh, you did mention that, you know, I mean, a lot of information goes home, cards go home, drink day, it's long and so forth. This is the feedback from, from the students, do you monitor that?
Yeah, so there's three classes. The teachers have said, I want to say, each teacher has said they've gotten, uh, a student saying like, hey, I got the note home, um, not overtly, overtly. I think that there's been one student each of the classes, although each one will get at least one or two notes sent home. Um, I don't know of any family that has like, sent an email or called and said, hey, I got this in the mail. I know that it's student in each one of the grades has a like, hey, I got that in the mail, like thanks. Or I showed it, my mom, you know, pointed this out to me. So, yeah.
What is that powerful from the, uh, perspective of families though, is, uh, from our elementary, our kindergarten classroom, there's a parent who asked if this was going to happen in their other child's classroom. Because the language that the kindergarten has been able to use has been powerful. They talk around the dinner table about the activities that they're doing and the games that they're playing. So it, it gets kids talking, it gets families talking. It just needs to be at a more universal level. Uh, the, the elementary level is the intrinsic character and how, who am I and what role do I play? And then as you go six, twelve, it's more of that extrinsic and what role am I playing in this larger setting?
When did the pilot start?
Um, my kiddo started in, in October, but the official pilot was.
January. And a letter did go home to those specific families, uh, that had students.
So you're in pilot stage now and you're going to scale this up eventually? Are you, is there any lessons learned?
So, um, we did have, um, the teachers, um, the three teachers shared the middle school, high school, uh, meeting. And I think there were some teachers that asked them directly, like, how is that, how is that really working? Um, and, um, uh, so they were able to say, you know, honestly, it does take longer. We thought, we were told it was like a fifteen to twenty-minute lesson. It has taken a little longer. Um, we purposely picked teachers that it wasn't out of their content area. So they're not missing parts of English or math or social studies or science. We did, um, the teachers that, um, we reached out to, to ask who was interested in the six that responded, had study skills, a language sampler, something that it wasn't impacting, um, content. Had study skills, uh, a language sampler, something that it wasn't impacting, um, content. So I think that's a lesson learned, like it, it does take at the middle level a little bit more time. So we have to be strategic and I think those are conversations that have already happened at the middle school, high school level is okay. How would that really, um, work when we're doing this full scale? Um, so that's one piece that we would need to consider. The other thing is, um, when you talked about the postcards home, I just wanted to add on. Teachers have mentioned that they're doing this, so other teachers have said, can I get one of those postcards? Cause I have something I want to send, um, home. So I thought that's just kind of nice that other people are saying, hey, am I able to utilize this? Because what we did was just print out every student's, um, uh, parent's name on a sheet. And so the teacher had every student in their class, but other teachers had heard that that was happening. So some of that, the nat- natural conversation has occurred, um, about that. So, yeah, lesson learned about timing certainly, and how we need to be mindful when creating blocks of time. Um, the other thing is I, um, because of the timing of it, um, you can imagine a middle school student that's maybe sitting in a class that had their own time, like I have this forty-two minutes to do this on my own clock. Um, you're not telling me what to do. And then we come in in January and say, oh, by the way, we're going to do these lessons. You can imagine a seventh and eighth grader going like, what? I was able to do this and this, and now you're asking me to do these lessons and get up and move and I want to do my homework. You know, um, so I think starting, um, from the start will be, also be important. So I think that's another lesson that we've learned, we did that with our sixth graders, um, when they started the language sampler and their engagement. Um, could be because of age, um, just was a lot more early on. So I think the sooner this becomes part of the culture, um, the, the more it will, um, become a little bit more. You know, and I think, um, like anything, you're going to have kids that it's, you know, it's not for me or I'm not comfortable. And, and that's okay to a certain extent. I think in the times that I've been in there and, and certain important has been in there, you've had those kind of people that are on the fence. And they've kind of like started to engage and talk a little bit, um, so that, that's been nice to, to see. Um, so next up, so, um, we, because we are part of the pilot, some of the, um, pieces, they were, um, kind enough. They're, they are going to feed the kids that participated in the pilot. So that, that's nice, that's the, um, outcome that, that the students will benefit from. So when they were saying, oh, why do I have to do this? I said, well, you can say, I, I get a pizza party out of it. Um, but another benefit will be, um, they're going to allow us to train another group of teachers, um, for free. So we had the group of teachers that went through the training, will be able to, um, have another group of teachers trained, um, as a benefit from engaging in the pilot, so that will be nice. So our goal, um, we have a meeting coming up soon with Character Strong to talk about timelines. So there's a component where all administrators can be trained. There's a component where all staff will have some training, not all staff to do the lessons, but staff to have a level of awareness of what this means in our district, um, K twelve. Um, so there'll be an opportunity for, um, you know, full staff understanding. Um, and then, um, training with the teachers that will be delivering the lessons, um, will be the component there. Um, again, both, um, Mrs. Hathaway and Mr. Benaps have mentioned, uh, the research. Their research shows they have certain things that they have found with implementation that are very important when implementing something. Um, so their support will run, um, per, uh, you know, for more than a year, um, if we engage in something moving forward, which, um, that is our hope. So I think that, that I just do also want to, um, say thank you to, um, Stephanie Hall, um, who has been doing the pilot, um, Dave Tasberg and Sarah Linsner, um, who have all participated in, in that, so.
Maybe I missed something, when you listed the grades on the pilot. Grade five was admitted, is that a typo, did I miss something or is there a reason why that's not there?
So the official, like, national pilot is the six, one grade, uh, or one class is six, seven and eight. At the elementary level, we just looked locally. Uh, we started with kindergarten because we had two, two teachers approach me and say, I'm struggling building culture in my classroom. And I said, well, here's a resource I've heard about and done some research on, try it out. And then they talked to a friend in first grade and the first grade friend saying, can I try that as well because I'm struggling? So, uh, at the fifth grade level, the way that scheduling is working, it, it hasn't played out to, um, work it, you know, in, in as a, as a pilot grade for, for us this year. But it'll be interesting to see over the next ten weeks if chatter begins. And it's a great end of fifth grade transitional tool that we step into, that they have a foundation for sixth grade.
And the last piece, I know, um, Mr. Benaps brought this up, it's not only about students. I think our staff would probably echo, our conference days have felt a little different because we've been trying to do some different things with staff to build community within our staff, um, K twelve. Um, some people will probably say that feels uncomfortable, um, but we've been trying to embed a lot of those activities, um, to engage our staff in that as well. So, um, again, it's broader than just students, um, but so.
Definitely, you're beginning of your presentation, you mentioned it near state and benchmarks that S C L.
Yeah.
Like that, with this pilot program, where, where do you see that we're, are we hitting the benchmarks early on?
Yeah.
Are we gaining ground to get to the benchmark?
That's a good question, because that's part of our strategic plan is to unpack those benchmarks, because they're in grade bands. Um, so we started, we looked at that a little bit, I would say at the conference day, we have some work to do. Um, I think some, a lot of that work can start at the elementary and will continue, um, to kind of look at, okay, within these benchmarks that are guidance, the state isn't requiring them yet. Um, it's interesting sometimes how they do that, they kind of roll something out and say, hey, why don't you try that? And then maybe say, okay, now this is expectation. So a lot of, um, those components align with, um, Character Strong. If not perfectly, um, I think we'll have to look at some things, um, within those. But, uh, a lot of those competencies, the castle competencies align with the benchmarks, align with, um, Character Strong. Yep, so that's a good question. Our cross country team is very patient.
They're used to long distance.
Right, long distance waiting.
Doing things that take a long time.
It's a good segue honestly, because, you know, certainly, uh, you know, talk about pillar wellness and things like that. I would argue no distance running and exercise certainly, get into that. And, uh, I guess the component of, of cross country that I try to build with the team, I guess, is also, uh, that is somewhat for ourselves. Um, which ties into our trips, to kind of recap, uh, the overnight trip that we did in September. So we came to you at the beginning of September, uh, asking for, uh, your approval, I guess, to go on the overnight trip to Queensberry with the cross country team, uh, the varsity team, I should say. And, uh, we had a great time and, and finally got our, our thoughts together to be able to come back and report, uh, how it was and, and what the athletes, uh, did. Um, and the notice that probably the racing part is the, the smallest component of the trip. But, um, there were lots of great memories and we had, uh, great, uh, results, um, and a great season overall, uh, on top of that. So, um, we, uh, arrived at Saratoga Spa State Park as our first stop. And, uh, unfortunately, there was a concert, uh, happening at Spec that day. So we didn't get to see as much of the architecture or the springs that we would have hoped. But, um, we were able to just kind of find this area that was a cross country ski lodge and have a nice, uh, park, just kind of in the woods area. And, you know, stretch our legs, get off the bus, um, and it was a good chance to just kind of, uh, soak up the, the woods and kind of the foothills of the Adirondacks that we were about to arrive into, uh, for the rest of our, our time in there. And after that, we'll pass to Bill Scamp and Simon Higawa.
Um, so the, the team there was at Olive Garden and we got there. And, um, they brought us breadsticks and salad, all the goodies for the meal. And remember, we had a breadstick eating competition. I got second place to Zoe Nidewak. I remember being very full after that meal. At least it was a good, um, carb load for the race the next day.
So, uh, this was the night before the meet.
Yes.
So we had like two hours once we got back to the hotel. And we had indoor water park inside the hotel, so we were able to change into our swimsuits and just walk down. And for two hours, we were just like, there's like a boogie board area. And then there was like tubing where you could go groups or like doubles or alone. And we just got to like hang out with each other for two hours and just relax in the lazy river. And it was, it was a lot of fun. I went in eighth grade, so we did this trip when I was in eighth grade. And I had as much fun, if not more, this year as than I did in eighth grade too. So this was nice, just getting to relax with my friends and forget that we had to run three miles in the morning.
And the next morning, we woke up pretty early, had some bagels and, um, went to the race. Um, it was like probably around four hours total. We got there and there were multiple races, so one of the, part of the girls' team ran in the first race. And then part of the boys' team ran in the second race. And then, um, the other girls ran in the second race. And then the other boys ran in this, uh, last race. And there were also lots of concession stands and stuff to buy there. And overall, the team did really well.
So then after we ran, we got to go to the Great Escape, which was right across our hotel. And so all we had to do was like walk over this bridge and then it was just, we went in groups. So like none of us were alone at any time and then we just got to just explore the park. And so there was a lot of roller coasters, there was a ride that Morons was convinced he wasn't going to get wet on and I got soaked. Um, but there was kind of stuff for everyone, as you can see, there was ramen fanny packs that they got. So it was like, obviously we were, we were like sore and tired, but it was a great way to kind of just like end the trip before our long bus ride home. Uh, yeah, a lot of roller coasters and a lot of rides and.
Um, uh, you know, it was, it was a whirlwind trip, but this is kind of our, our whole group. Um, there was, you know, JV and a varsity race of each, um, even though it's all considered the varsity cross country team. Um, and again, we just wanted to, to come back and, and share with you the memories that we were able to have together as a team and how it really correlated into a very successful year for the teams overall. Um, we did have Catherine Staley make it to the state meeting and have a fantastic year, uh, earning a sectional patch as well. So we did, we were able to kind of continue to have the, the high expectations that we have as a successful team. Uh, but behind that is really all the smiles and memories and things that, that keep us going. Um, and so hopefully, uh, I'll be back, Mallory won't be, but, uh, potentially with Simon or other people, uh, uh, in June to present another trip that we'd like to go on next year. Um, there is another indoor water park in another part of the state that we're investigating right now to hope we can, uh, uh, go to again and, uh, and try to recourse out, that we still have a great competition for us. So just wanted to come back in and thank you for all the support. Uh, we didn't have to do that much fundraising, there was a lot of great support from Mr. Bailey, Mr. Salto as well, to provide the buses and different things like that to make it affordable for us to, to happen and, and have a great experience. And I just wanted to come and share and, uh, and kind of show you the pictures and thank you again. Let us, let you know that we'll be back, uh, we'll do the next year as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
No, you can't leave, you have to stay for the rest of the.
Administrative updates, so Mr. Salatell.
I will not do that long, but, uh, I just want to start off, thank you for supporting our, all of our programs, all of our athletic teams and our extracurricular, as we know, our odyssey to mine. Teams will be going equal fifteenth to the state competition. Again, they're going to be done without all your support, so thank you. And we wish them the best of luck in their future competition. I just left another update, I just left the, uh, graduation meeting, uh, with some parents that attended just to explain the changes and the new format of graduation, as well as where the location is going to be. Like always, you get here from both sides, some are pleased, some not pleased. You just try to make the most informed decision as possible. When it gets to this, I think we will, as always, have a break ceremony. Uh, we'll recognize our students and we'll also, uh, have a, a very classy event. And, and I think that's very important for our students, it's been a very accomplished class. And, uh, they, they have a lot of great things that they will be doing in the future for sure. We have a survivor's play coming up next week. This is the bay where we have, uh, it's related to the Holocaust. And then we have students that go into classes and speak to middle level classes. So a great opportunity for some peer instruction with our high schoolers, as well as, as giving them the knowledge and the history of, of the, the unfortunate, um, state of the Holocaust. And our students always have positive reviews about it. I'm sure that will be the same this year. The next few months will be full of testing, uh, both at the middle school and high school. We have our middle level assessments coming up, Stroh, thank you for all your help with that. And as you know, we do them all computer based, so that takes on a big task for Mr. Hold. He always gets us well prepared for this, and I'm sure this year will be the same. But that's for our middle level students and, uh, then we get right into AP, so it goes from middle level to the higher end, uh, high school. And then before you know it, we'll be into our June regions. The state did throw a curve ball again this year, our US history regions will be June first. And we sometimes do that, which really eliminates some instructional days leading up to it. It kind of throws off our schedule from a school standpoint. But I have all the confidence in the world that our staff, who, who does a great job preparing our students for region's exams, as well as all the other assessments. And, and I'm sure that will be once again, a reflection of the hard work that goes into that. And, and how we prepare our students for those exams. Uh, the other part of the end of the year that's always special are all of our concerts be coming up and our award ceremony, a lot of special events. Once you get past April break, time flies and it seems literally, before you know it, we're on stage for commencement. So we, we realize that, we tried to pack a lot of things in. So Mr. Bailey, thank you for scheduling around the athletics, because we have to get all those games in, I think. Some teams play four days a week, so, and part of the reason for that is we try to keep some days free of athletic events for NHS and JHS, which is coming up, our award ceremony. So we try to, uh, really delegate certain days where, where we don't want to schedule any games. And that overloads the schedule often, either in the front or the back. And then of course, we have weather in the spring that we have to contend to. I'd be remiss if I did not leave this part out. Prom two weeks away, you know, the excitement that comes with that. And we're going to Terry Hills, I'm sure that's going to be a well attended and well planned and wonderful memories that our students will make at the prom. Our students have traditionally really held the highest standard and represented our school in the finest manner when we go to facilities outside of Geneseo. And I'm sure that will be the same this year. So that'll be a great event for our students. And then we have all of our end of the year trips, we're hearing a lot about. This year, we have a couple of six, seven, eight, then we obviously get into our high school and senior trip and physics trip and some, some of the things you've already approved. Again, we've been doing that for all your, all your support and flexibility and allowing our students to really participate in these wonderful experiences. Any questions?
Was a lot of people at the graduation meeting?
No, it was well attended, I think maybe twelve, ten. That's not uncommon with a lot of meetings, uh, for at night.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, it'd be pretty quick, um, winter sports obviously, uh, ended, uh, a month and a half ago or so. And spring sports started in the middle of March, um, with varsity and JV. Um, we actually currently have over two hundred students participating in spring athletics in grade seven through twelve. Uh, Spotify just started today, um, so they're just kind of getting going there. But, uh, definitely a good, a good percentage of our seven to twelve students are, are definitely participating, uh, in our athletics. It was kind of nice having turf, um, and this spring a little bit, because our teams were able to get outside a lot earlier than they would have been. Uh, we used to do some things, uh, also with the gym issue. Um, it, it definitely helped out because we really didn't have any place for any teams to kind of really go, uh, in the best area a little bit. And half a gym, which you couldn't do much in, um, and, uh, the track team kind of went with it. Uh, Mr. Morris left, but they were very flexible and just kind of did what they could do. Uh, normally we give some gym time at one of the gyms for a while. Uh, and the golf team was, uh, very flexible as well, just kind of, uh, that's, it's and things like that as far as using the funnel and different areas like that. So, um, it definitely did take the coaches and the students and stuff like that, because their, their flexibility and patience, um, as we work through that. But, um, definitely the additional turf out there was, was a huge asset. So, um, definitely well worth, uh, the investment and. So that's really happening right now, spring sports kind of just started rolling today. Obviously you had a JV baseball game today, um, varsity team played, uh, over break, a game, um, down south, and we're just tuned in with that. And, uh, actually, uh, working on. uh down south and we're just tuned to go with that. And uh actually uh working on finalizing fall sports schedules already. Uh even though it's in September, uh the schedules are out there. We're trying to finalize uh times, sites and locations and uh teams to play at or not with games and things like that. So um a long ways away, um but need to get those games uh planned and scheduled so that we could uh start planning some other things. So uh both of the biggest things going on. Um I did send uh five sophomores and one coach went to SUNY Geneseo the week before break to a sportsmanship summit um hosted by Section Five, um just to learn a little bit more about, uh they did a mindfulness thing, uh which kind of relates to social emotional a little bit, um just how to better prepare themselves and things like that. There was also a guest speaker there about um pause before you post, which we, we've had that here before a while ago. Uh just about social media and things like that, how it can, it can impact you later in life and things like that, just to try to do that. So uh five totally up-and-coming, um some leaders in our, our athletic programs and hopefully in our school kind of look to that. And uh we're gonna try to work with that a little bit, just kind of what they, what they took in to bring back uh. So uh that's kind of where we're at. If you have any questions, we're gonna have the answer.
Really good report. Thank you very much. And
You know, I, I didn't have this planned, um that we would have these presentations prior to the budget presentation, but I think it really speaks to um the programming and the dedication to all of our staff and the opportunities that we provide our students and the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four um Geneseo budget also um continues to provide those opportunities for our, our staff and students. So you know, just there's some, there's some great work that's taking place here and this current budget will, will continue to support that. So overall, I just wanted to give you some general data and to show you that over the last couple of years, our enrollment is staying consistent. I think that's important to know because you're hearing about a lot of neighboring districts who their enrollment is declining. Our enrollment is staying consistent um both for our K twelve student enrollment as well as our faculty members um at both K five and six twelve. When you look at our overview, uh we do have just over a two-point-two million dollar increase from last year to this year. Um really, that is due to debt service, which I'll explain later, healthcare cost increases and contractual salary increases. You can see that our tax levy is one point nine, so just over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars increase in our property tax levy. And then you can see the increase in our state aid, which I will also explain a little bit later. Um so this is another snapshot of our revenues. Again, that property tax, that's reflective of that one point nine percent increase. State aid, we did see the increase in state aid due to the foundation aid being fully funded. And they let the foundation aid run for the first time, which means that it took into account inflation. And so that is why we see such an increase in, in our foundation aid this year. Um in the miscellaneous line, that does include pilots. And um in, in this pilot, we did receive um a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less, um what we anticipate getting a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less from one of the businesses that currently has a pilot, and that was due to the property reassessment. Um again, when we look at um appropriated fund balance and appropriate reserves, brings us to our twenty-four million, two-hundred-twenty-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven. Building project, or excuse me, bu- budget. So I really wanted to take some time to look budget to budget on our state revenue. So our foundation aid, again, that's where you see that significant increase of over a million dollars. The rest of the aids that are listed on this sheet, they are all expense-driven aids, meaning as you expend more money, you receive more of your state aid depending on worker ratios for those different things. So for example, you do see there's an increase in the BOCs revenue. That is really due to the increase in the amount of students that we anticipate um going to do a career tech program. We used to average around twenty-five students and recently been between forty-five and fifty students per year attending their career in tech. Our high-cost access and private access, those are our special education students. And when they receive services and their tuition is past a certain threshold, we receive aid back on, on those services. Software, library and textbook are pretty self-explanatory. Transportation, again, received an increase in that revenue due to increased expenses. And um you see the increase in building aid of that seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine, hundred thousand. And really, that's due to anticipated building aid, because we will be bringing debt service on our books. And I will explain that in a later slide as well. So the other component is our expenditures. So when you look at that first line of leadership and school improvement, this is really the operation component of our budget. This includes the Board of Education salary, not salary rise. That was pretty, that was pretty your contractual and conference lines. It does include superintendent salary in there as well as business office salary. Well, you know, just wanted to butter you up for the budget presentation. Um facilities and operations, obviously, this is our operations and maintenance. Teaching, teaching and learning. These are our general education um salary increases. And you'll notice that there's just an increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand. And that is because we are paying for five hundred thousand dollars of general education salaries from our federal grants, which I'll present next week and give you, or next board being an update on our federal grants. So they need to be expended by September of twenty twenty-four. So that's why you don't see that increase in our general fund. You see that in our, in our grant. School and labor, school libraries and technology, again, you see a pretty significant increase. This is where that expenditure of the career and tech services really comes into on, on this part of our budget. Again, we are seeing significant increase in our students participating in the career and tech services. And we're excited about them having those opportunities. Special education and student services. So this is um any of our services for our students have special education services. So it's our special teachers, it's our OT, OTPT school psychologists that are providing services. Co-curricular and extracurricular, those are athletics and co-curricular um opportunities. Transportation, that increase is significantly due to um salary and contractual obligations. We know that there's a bus driver shortage and, and we knew as a district that we needed to provide compensation in their, in their contract negotiations to keep our highly skilled drivers here at Geneseo. We, we don't want to lose them. So we we knew that that increase would take some, there take place. And then that last line, you see just over one point two million dollars in our debt service. And what debt service is, is that is the principal and interest for our building project coming on. So we know that we have a fifteen and a half million dollar capital project going on. We had our EPC project and then we had bus purchases. So you can see that we, for both years, we've had the capital outlay projects, so that stayed consistent. One thing that's, I wanted to point out in our existing debt, if you remember, we refinanced our debt and for a lower interest rate. And by doing that, we saved over a hundred thousand dollars in our existing debt. But we anticipated that we would see this increase of just over one point two million, because we knew that the debt from our capital project, EPC and bus purchases would come into play for um for this year. Program highlights. And again, I really think earlier today, um a lot of the presentations really talked about that. We will have a state-of-the-art STEAM space. We are the only school in the Livingston County region that has an orchestra. We offer our students many BOCs-sponsored competitions such as Tech Wars. That's where they practice their robotics. ICE, Athletics, Odyssey of the Mind, we've heard about that. Many times, our athletes are recognized as scholar athletes and keeping their GPA at a certain level. We recognize our whole teams when that happens. Um we're also going to continue with our capital outlay projects. We know the building is fifty years old and we need to continue with those annual maintenance projects. We are one of the only schools in Livingston County that's able to offer our mental health therapists through Rochester Regional Health. We are going to continue to talk up and implement our social emotional curriculum that you heard a lot about today. We also offer a lot of advanced placement courses. And you know, this is really speaks to the high school staff as well as our scheduling department, because offering that many singletons makes our scheduling very complicated, but we want to make sure that we continue to offer those opportunities for our students. And so we will continue to offer a wide variety of AEC courses. The other thing is this year, we've talked about the eight-one-one special education classroom that we created in um the elementary building. It's a K-one-two classroom. And there are many, many positive be- benefits to having that program um in our district. But one, the first and foremost in my opinion is those students are receiving their instruction in their homeschool. And, and that's critical. Every, every student deserves an opportunity to be educated in their homeschool. Um secondly, it's also a cost-saving measure. Instead of these students going out to either BOCs or another school district and us paying tuition to that school district, um we're able to have our students educated here. So very proud of, of that. And it's, it's been very successful this year. So we do have three budget proposals this year. The first one is to approve our twenty-four million um budget. Our second one is to purchase three diesel-powered seventy-seven Passions or buses at the five hundred thousand. If you remember last year, we bought those exact buses at this time and they cost three hundred ninety-two thousand. So you can see the cost escalation um that is taking place just within one year. Um you know, we're still being told that by twenty twenty-seven, we'll be purchasing, are you sitting down, David? Electric-powered buses.
The five hundred would cover one electric bus.
And that is true. Significant cost increase um as well as, as many of the infrastructure components that would be needed. That's just the bus. That is, that is just the bus. That is correct. And then our third proposal is that we do have three um open seats for board members. So um board member packets are available in the district office. They need to be returned next Monday by five P M. So spread the word. And then our vote is Tuesday, May sixteenth. And just note that we did um change the time since eight A M to eight P M at our auditorium lobby. And the public hearing is May second. And that is from six to seven. And we are on schedule to have the budget newsletter in the home prior to our budget uh presentation, because that was um a major some major feedback that we received from our community and it made a lot of sense. So we, we made that a goal and we are on, on track to hit that goal. Any questions from regards to the budget?
The private excess costs. Are those kids that go to like the Norman Howards and the Mary Carriolas?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, those are private, the private um special education programs.
Can you repeat when the budget hearing is?
May seventh, Tuesday, May second. Six to seven.
I'll buy the board. You know, great job, everyone. From that budget to go, there's a lot of work on that. Uh Ken, the finance committee. Uh great job on that, keeping the levy under two. That's terrific. Um nicely done. Nicely done.
A lot of work by the finance.
Indeed. Community relation. No one signed up? All right, so uh many reports.
The only thing I have to add is that we're about to go back on the normal schedule now, so we'll be back for once in a while. And the other thing we did talk to some of the grant programs that uh we have kind of short-lived and all of them, but those are beyond that, that's what Mr. always forgot.
Well done. Thank you. Uh policy committee, we, we didn't meet, but um because of that, we'll, we'll meet, we'll meet next time at uh six, six o'clock prior to the next meeting. Great. Keep working on it, Paul. And uh you see, yeah. And uh brings us to personal.
All right. I'll be personal. I'd like to entertain a consent motion for items, which is eight point zero two, eight point zero three, eight point zero four. Eight point one zero and eight point one one. Sorry.
Questions? And those, you did nicely done.
Not questions, but certainly want to recommend um accepting with regrets retirement of both Mr. Mao and Mr. Groupin, two just steadfast teachers who have given so much to our district and to so many students and um I will be honest, when they both turned in the letters, I tried to tease them, sway them. But they said it's time. They said it was time. So certainly just want to, on behalf of the district, thank them for the many years of service that they've given to.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of those items, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Harry, thank you.
Under new business. Entertain a consent motion. Do we need to do a bunch separately? Entertaining consent motion for items nine point zero two through nine point zero seven.
Second, questions on any of those? Ready good? All in favor, say aye. Aye. You want to oppose? Anonymous, thank you. Business office.
Under the business office, I'd like to entertain a consent motion for items ten point oh two and ten point zero five.
Sorry. Questions on those? Ready good? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? Anonymous, thank you. Um item eleven, uh discussion is, is, is Mike pointed out, uh the year's gonna just fly by now. And so we just take a quick look at our, where we are on board goals. I think Cherry sent them to everybody attached to the, to the agenda. Um I think we're doing pretty well. The goal one is the policy oversight and we're making headway on policy. Strategic planning, we passed a strategic plan. Uh board development, we had a retreat. Uh the one thing that we haven't done yet is the uh, the board's self-eval. I found one talking to uh the representative from Super Eval that we use for Cindy's. And they've got one for uh board review, which is virtually identical to the one that we did last year, only I think it's, it's a little easier to tabulate. So uh if there's any objection to that, um I'd like to do that uh through Super Eval. Uh more to follow. And uh fiscal responsibility is the last goal and uh thanks to the committee, Ken, Cindy, I think we're doing pretty well on fiscal responsibility. So um I think all our, we're, we're over the target on goals. Thank you to everybody um for making it work and uh we'll do that self-assessment and I think we'll be good, Cherry.
Cherry and I can fill in, because there's progress by March fifteenth. Just ask for a stuff. So Cherry and I can fill in that progress and then um send it out to all of you.
Wasn't that a good call?
Thank you.
There is. I apologize for that. Community leadership. Active and approachable board members attending uh events where possible. Um I think we do pretty well on that too. We're all, we're all engaged and uh
Kind of legislative breakfast and not with other officials.
Yeah. Ask for more money. And so so I think we're in good shape. I love so this FYI. Um which leads us to uh executive session. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to enter into executive session or?
Sorry. All in favor? Thank you all.